Okay, good morning, and I'll call to order the April 3rd, 2023, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that, we'll just have a moment of silence this morning because Pastor Josh Frazier is on a mission trip in Southeast Asia, and he said he would be back sometime later today. So, he's been out of town on that mission trip at our last meeting in this one. So, we'll have a moment of silence after we have our pledge. So, if everyone please stand for this pledge.
(inaudible)
Yeah, our next order of business is public hearings, but we do not have any today. And then next will be our public comment session. And today, I want to recognize, we have something that's never really happened before. I don't think. I've been a commissioner for nineteen years, and this is the first time I've ever had this happen. But, the Transylvania Board of Commissioners voted on a resolution at their last meeting. And so, they have all come from Pennsylvania County, all five of them, they're sitting on the front row, have all come to our meeting today to present that resolution. And I appreciate them coming over. They came across the mountain. If you go across the mountain, your ears pop because you're going across the mountain, and then you got a curvy road. And if you're like me, you get carsick if you're not driving. So, they've come a long way, and I really appreciate the solidarity that they're showing and the teamwork, because we are a regional economy. And a lot of people don't understand that, but we are. And in this time, we understand it. And they've gone through some really setbacks in their economic plant closings and everything. So, Jason Chapel's here, and if you want to introduce your folks, you can. And then after you get done speaking, we want to take a group photo because, so that you can send that to your paper in Transylvania County. So, welcome, Jason. Jason Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here. If you would, I would like to introduce our Commissioners. All five of us came over this morning. We just want to show a support for you. And I'd like to introduce you, Commissioner Theresa McCall, our Vice Chairman Jake Dalton, Commissioner Larry Chapman, and Commissioner Emmett Cessiato. And once again, my name is Jason Chapel, and I'm the chairman. At our last meeting, and even before that, as soon as we heard the news, we were heartbroken as everyone was, just about what you're going through. I know I reached out before we did a resolution and just emailed the chairman and just said, "We're praying for you." I mean, that's the extent of our thoughts, our prayers are with you. We know what you're going through. Every situation's different, but our community went through similar situations. And we just wish we could do more, but we want to do something just to show you that we are there for you. If we can assist you in any way, I believe our county manager has reached out, or has already reached out, and has just offered any help that she can have as well. And that goes for, I want to speak for all the Commissioners, each and every one of us. If we can help you in any way, please let us know. You're absolutely correct that this is a regional economy. This is a regional job market, so we are going to work together. But even beyond that, if you just need someone to talk to about the situation, we're here. At our last meeting, we did pass a resolution. I'd like to read that if I could. It's Resolution 1420...
If you would, pull the mic down. No, that's fine. And I should have told you to start with. And by the way, this is broadcast on YouTube TV. If y'all would like to come look it up online, just put "Haywood County Commissioners Meeting," and you can watch the clip. So, but anyway, yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 142023, in express of support and solidarity with Haywood County and the Town of Canton. Whereas, Transylvania County Board of Commissioners was saddened to learn about the devastating news of the closing of Praktive Evergreen Canton Paper Mill. That has been a mainstay of Haywood County's economy and very fabric of life in Haywood County and the Town of Canton for nearly 120 years. And whereas, Transylvania County sympathizes with Haywood County and the Town of Canton as we have shared experience of the shutdown of our three major manufacturing companies in 2002, all of which were a major part of our county's tax base, and whose closing completely transformed our local economy. And whereas, Transylvania County is heartbroken for the men and women in the Haywood County community, and we offer our condolences to all those affected for the loss of the mill. And whereas, Transylvania County stands in support and in solidarity with Haywood County and the Town of Canton as they formulate a plan to navigate the weeks and months ahead. And whereas, Transylvania County echoes recent comments by Congressman Chuck Edwards that the paper mill, while important for many decades, does not define who you are, and that Haywood County and the Town of Canton are defined by the spirit and mountain heritage, and are powered by their belief in God. And whereas, Transylvania County acknowledges the recovery will be a long and difficult process, but believes there will be better days ahead. And whereas, Transylvania County believes Haywood County and Town of Canton have character, grit, and ability to overcome adversity in this economic crisis and build a new future. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Transylvania County Board of Commissioners that we express our deepest condolences and sympathy, and we stand in support and solidarity with Haywood County and Town of Canton as they navigate the steps to regrow their community. Signed this day 27th, day of March 2023, my signature, Jason R. Chapel, Chairman. Just, we're here to support you. We know it's a difficult time, many difficult decisions ahead. You're not alone, is the biggest thing. And we are, anything that we can do to help our Commissioners, our community, and we are praying for you, supporting you. We all had family, friends that worked when our mills were closed down. I've got family over here that's part of your community as well. So, we are part of it, and we're just here to help in any way we can.
Yes, sir. We'd like to get a picture. online, Mary Thomas. Is she here this morning? Hey, Mary, welcome. Appreciate you coming out this morning.
I am Mary Thomas, and I live in Water Rock Estates. I am speaking on behalf of a local nonprofit, the Environmental Action Community of Western North Carolina. I saw on today's agenda a request of approval of the Third Amendment to the Sanitary Landfill Operational Agreement. I recently made a visit to White Oak Landfill and noted there had been a change in managers. Sand Tech Environmental Services, the previous manager, has been acquired by Republic Services, the second-largest waste management company in the United States. Republic operates landfills, recycling centers, and collection routes in 41 states. Their ability to turn trash into cash has attracted big investors. Cascade Investments, Bill Gates' personal holding company, receives more than $200 million a year in dividends from its 34% stake in Republic. For modern landfills, the conversion of gas to energy is one solution for dealing with waste. Landfills' bio gas consist of about 50% methane. Once it's filtered through collection pipes, a portion of gas is converted into renewable natural gas, or RNG. Over 3,000 of Republic's truck fleet run on natural gas that has been captured through its gas-to-energy projects. Republic Services has plans for 39 additional RNG projects by 2027. In its 2030 goals, Republic Services committed to increase recovery of key material by 40%, and increase reuse of biogas by 50%. In 2023, they will open the nation's first integrated plastics recycling facility, which will address the demand for recycled plastic. The Republic Services Polymer Center represents the first time a U.S. company will manage the plastic stream from curbside collection to production and delivery of high-quality recycled plastic. Republic anticipates opening two or three more centers. All of these reports are music to the ears of grassroots environmental groups. Our White Oak Landfill may play a role in a more sustainable future. There is also some benefit for Haywood County for Republic's National Neighborhood Promise program. We should approve the Third Amendment of the Sanitary Landfill Operational Agreement with Republic Services.
I meant to tell you, you had five minutes since you were speaking for a group. So, did you get done?
What's that?
You had five minutes, so...
That's it. I'm finished.
Okay, all right. Good. Okay. Since you're speaking for a group, and we appreciate you coming out this morning. Okay, would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Just say, limit your comments to three minutes, and if you would, speak into the mic.
Well, I'm speaking for a lot of citizens around here, but I think I can get it out in three minutes. Like to verify a few things with y'all's help of what you've accomplished since 2018. I'll go down the list and ask you, and when you give your little spiel afterwards, you can clue us in, okay? Yes or no, should government be run like a business? Um, yes or no? Does anyone here think that Haywood County is run like a business? There again, yes or no? Was it a business decision to give $800,000 to Asheville to help you with economic development, economic development? That's the same year you hired somebody for $132,000 and change a year as your own economic developer. So, there, if you add those things up, you've spent a million and a half dollars since 2018 for zilch, nada, which is Spanish for those who don't know, nothing. And I'd like to have you some justification for this. I'd call it nonsense, but that'd be other than it. Did we have a knockout clause or get out of jail-free agreement with Asheville? And if we did, did anyone have the business sense to ask for an out in this? Or do they like the free money of which you'll write them a check for in 2024? God, you're not smiling. I just, are you all in the welfare business? Maybe I should sign up. I could do this for nothing. I could give a million and a half away for nothing. Gosh, with no experience. But you've got to be a lifer, a Haywood lifer, to have the common sense to care about Haywood. So, I guess I don't care. I only live here six and a half years. I don't care enough about Haywood. Is that right, Mr. Long? Or Commissioner Long? Have y'all taken any classes at Haywood College? They have some great online classes, Economics, Business 101. Those are just for starters. Mr. Rogers, do you give free oil changes or tires out to your clients that are from Asheville? Ms. Bush, do you give free insurance policies out? And Mr. Inslee, do you, free surveying? Tommy, I know you don't do anything, so you can't give it away free, okay? What are your accomplishments since 2018? $800,000 to Asheville, $700,000 to whomever that said he knows what he's doing, and that harm reduction fiasco where it gave needles everywhere? And one of our Commissioners said the needles were there because people go in and buy them and didn't throw them around. I had an aunt who bought lots of needles for diabetics. She didn't just throw them around. She deposited them the right way. But we have someone on our board up here that thinks the needle fiasco was prior to harm reduction. Is that the case? What a convoluted reason, I may add. The Greenway Plan's going to be a disaster. Haywood can't take care, I mean, excuse me, Waynesville can't take care of that little small greenway. I talked to someone the other day, said it was full of trash. There were druggies around there, vagrants, and ours was a mess. Magically, it got cleaned up. He must have said something to somebody, and somebody heard about it, because y'all have been trying to pass this Greenway thing. So, we're going to have miles of trails, miles that are filthy with vagrants and drug addicts. And I'll be back here every week or two to remind you, oh, thank goodness, we have a new sheriff in town, because this gentleman does not recruit homeless and vagrants. He's doing his job, and a heck of a job, I may say. So, does Haywood run like a business? Go sleep on it. But first, try some economics and some business courses at Haywood Community College. I heard they do it remotely. You can do it remotely. Thank you very much.
Okay, would anyone else care to address the board? Okay, we'll close the public comment session, and we'll move to constituent concerns. I'm not sure where I'm at in order. Tommy, you want to say anything? Anything, Terry? Okay, let me just say that I really appreciate Transylvania County coming over here. They came a long way, and you know, Mondays are usually busy. I should have said this while they were here. At least for my business, it's probably one of the busiest days, probably for a lot of businesses. So, I appreciate them making the trip, a long trip over here to do that, just for a few minutes. And I appreciate the solidarity that they showed, and the teamwork, and the regional approach that we all try to do to help our neighbors. So, I just wanted to make that comment and just let you all know. I really appreciate that. And I know all the other Commissioners do, too. It was a great gesture of solidarity. Okay, we'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations. And this morning, we have Chris Brown, the CEO of Haywood Regional Medical Center. Welcome, Chris. I'm sorry, did I? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Chris. Yeah, let me say, say a public hearing? I don't think I got that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Amy's got me lined up. That's okay. Under constituent concerns, I want to note that most Haywood County government offices will be closed Friday, April 7th, in recognition of Good Friday. Solid Waste Convenience Centers, Material Recovery Facility, and White Oak will be maintaining regular hours. So, if you're wondering if you can take your trash, you can on those days. Also, there'll be a public hearing regarding the Tropical Storm Fred action plan public comment period at the April 17th meeting. Recognize, and I want to recognize David Francis, our Community and Economic Development Director, to explain that. Welcome, Dave.
Morning, Commissioners. As you may remember, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency was here last August to talk about a grant that we had been awarded due to Tropical Storm Fred. And part of that, we received $7 million. Since then, we found out that we are going to receive another $5.2 million as part of the grant process. So, I'd like to announce that a public hearing will be held April 17th at 5:30 here in this room. The North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency is accepting public comment on a draft action plan for an additional spending of 5.2 million in U.S. Department of HUD, U.S., excuse me, Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding, provided to the state for Tropical Storm Fred. The unmet needs specifically related to owner-occupied housing, rental housing, economic revitalization, infrastructure were designated as most impacted and distressed. Areas by HUD due to the impacts from the storm. The draft plan is available for review on the Rebuild NC website, www.rebuild.nc.gov/AboutPlans-Policy. Printed copies of the draft plan are also available by calling 984-833-5350. INCOR will hold a public hearing again here on April 17th at 5:30. Public comments on the draft action plan will be held here, and any written comments that the public would like to make can be emailed to publiccomments@rebuild.nc.gov, or the U.S. Postal Service mail to INCOR, Attention Tropical Storm Fred, Post Office Box 110465, Durham, North Carolina, 27709. Any questions about that?
Any questions about that?
Yeah. Also, I've got a couple of updates about the mill I would like to share with you as well, too. The Mill Strong Helpline is now up and running. That number is 828-356-2023. It is operating Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00, or, excuse me, to 7:00 p.m. And if you're seeking help with employment, training, health insurance, health care, and financial assistance, or guidance, we encourage you to call this helpline. Also, there is a Crosses Helpline available as well, too, through Via Health. It is available 24/7. And that number is 800-849-6127, or there's also a hotline, visit at ViaHealth.com as well, too. Also, there's a new info sheet that will be, now that the rapid response notices have been out, the North Carolina Division of Employment Security, Evergreen, will open all unemployment insurance claims due to the mass layoff. You can create a profile at the North Carolina Department of Employment Security. That address is des.nc.gov, or 1-888-737-20259. There's also a host, you can find this at the Mill Strong email website, and also at haywood.edu/evergreen. I'd like to also announce two job fairs are going to be available. One Thursday, April 13th, from 12 to 7. Over 30 businesses will be there, and that will be located at the Canton Middle School at 60 Penland Street, Canton, North Carolina. Another one will be Saturday, April 15th, from 9 to 5 p.m. at 882 Champion Drive, Canton, North Carolina. Local companies will be there, and then also will be revenue assistants, or, excuse me, resume assistants will be available to help any resumes there. So, there's, you know, still a lot of, you know, things going on to help workers. Learned, you know, a few other companies have picked up some of the workers over the weekend. Some local, some local companies had hired some of the mill workers here to have jobs here in Haywood County, so that was, that was good to hear as well, too. Things are continuing to move. As I've mentioned before, that the wastewater treatment facility is, you know, a very important item that will not solve itself. So, we've been in contact with DEQ and come up with a plan, working with the engineers about how we work through this over the next couple of months, because we have a lot to do between now and the, whenever that case may be, that terminates there. Anything else you'd like for me to address?
Well, just, Dave, you know, we've got to also remember the peripheral workers are also welcome to come to those job fairs, because there are a lot of support jobs that are going to be going away.
Yeah, so, any of the, because it's not just open, good point, Mr. Chairman. It's not open just for any, just the mill workers. It's open for everybody that might be affected by this. You know, one of the things that, you know, we keep learning more about how the impact is going with the North Carolina Forestry Association. You know, we hear about the chip mills closing here, but we started learning how many loggers are going to be impacted of this over the last, last week or so. And so, you know, those folks are going to be severely impacted by this, you know, and that's, and I think I've told you all before, it's a four-state region that that's going to be felt from as well. So, any workers that are affected, you know, if it's a business that's closing, or a restaurant that's, you know, backing off, all those employees are welcome to come to these job fairs, not just for the mill workers.
Thank you, David, for all your work you do on this. I know Commissioner Amy and Commissioner Best and I were in a regional meeting last week, and the counties from here to Cherokee County, they're all going to be affected by this. I was, like you, I was greatly surprised to hear the number of loggers and forest products. Folks from here to Murphy, Graham County, Jackson County, Macon, all through the region, especially Clay County. There was a company that was started up, there's going to be about 50 to 60 folks unemployed. They said they can't afford to truck it to another mill. It's just too far with the price of diesel fuel. So, they're going to have to shut down. And all the truckers, truckers that's going to be involved. So, I do, I do can report that there's a lot of folks finding employment through our regional partnerships. A lot of my coworkers, sadly to say, they're already leaving. They've sought other employment, and, you know, it is sad to see that. But there is hope for these folks. And I know the Commissioners from Transylvania County are gone, but some of my good friends came from Acosta. When Acosta shut down in 2002, the mill snatched up some great talent, instrumentation folks, worked alongside with those folks, and they were, they were just tremendous. And I've already had calls back from them. A couple of them retired. But, you know, it takes, you know, the regional approach and friendships and partnerships, just like the show of solidarity from Transylvania County. It means a lot, and the teamwork will pull through for our people.
And that's, you know, again, that's what is important, is those regional partnerships. You know, that was so gracious of, you know, the Transylvania Board to come over and, you know, and show their support. And as y'all, we've talked about, you know, who we've heard from, you know, you know, across the state, you know, or local neighbors, and then, you know, the folks down east, folks in Washington, D.C. So, you know, you know, there's a lot of people looking out for us, and I feel like we're able to, you know, use those friendships, you know, for the betterment of our county. Because one of the things that I think, you know, Mr. Van Wilder is, you know, really confused on, is that he keeps saying Asheville, Asheville. We're partners with the Asheville Chamber. It's a 700-plus member organization. They have nine folks dedicated to economic development. They have nine folks dedicated to economic development. Two folks that we work with exclusively in this partnership. And if we didn't have that partnership right now, you know, the things that they've been able to do for us in the, over the last three weeks, it's been incredible. You know, and then opening some doors and, you know, from, you know, their experience has been very, very helpful. The, and it's, you know, a shame because, you know, individuals and, you know, certain people keep wanting to tear things down and tear them apart. Especially during this time, you want to tear something apart when we really need to be coming together? It's just odd. Seems a little selfish to me. The other thing that, you know, I think is just wonderful about how we work together, you know, Haywood County is in a statistical group together. It's Haywood, Transylvania, Henderson, and Madison. We're already part of a group there. So we worked, we worked with that group. Again, we worked with Land of Sky, which is the Council of Government for Buncombe County. And we're lucky to work with Southwest Commission, Council of Governments for the West. And that's what those partnerships mean, and especially in a time like this, is extremely important to have those. So we're, you know, so, you know, say that, you know, this, saying Asheville, Asheville is wrong. I think it's intentional because we're with the Asheville Chamber, the region's largest chamber. You know, a good group of folks, you know, they, you know, don't recruit Pratt and Whitney. You don't recruit GE Aviation unless you know what you're doing. And they've been a big help to me. Now, we've had, you know, seven big projects that's come through here. We were the finalists, we were getting ready to sign an economic development agreement. And COVID hit, they pulled back. Now, some of the things, you know, I, we can't talk about, we can't get out here and say we do this and do that due to non-disclosure agreements. That's the way the businesses want them. We can't talk about a lot of things. That's why you hear, you know, these project names, you know, Project Catamount, Project Clemson, you know, Project XYZ. It's because the companies want to be protected as they're moving or changing, you know, directions. That's why those things happen. But we can't talk about a lot of those things. Some of you all know about some of the things we're working on, but in the general things, we don't come out here and say we're doing this and doing that. That's per the business's request, you know. As for me, you know, I appreciate somebody worrying about me, but I tell you one thing, you don't have to worry about my work ethic and what I do during the day. You don't have to worry about that. You know, the, you know, I was the director of a bank. Mr. Ramey, Mr. Miller back there, were both depositors at my bank. So they must think I have a pretty good business acumen for that. So, you know, I've got, I'd be glad to sit down with, you know, Mr. Wilder and be glad to be able to talk to him. If he wants to sit down and talk, I'd be glad to chat with him anytime he wants to. So, you have any questions, sir? Ma'am?
Thanks, Dave. Hey, Chris, I apologize. Come on. She, Ramey had it, Amy had it all fixed for me here, written out, and I totally forgot about it, so.
It happens to all of us, for sure, all the time. Well, I appreciate being before you all this morning and having the opportunity to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about myself and some of the priorities that we're focused on at Haywood Regional Medical Center. So I began my career in healthcare in 1991 as a file room clerk in the radiology department when I was pursuing an associate degree from Edgecombe Community College in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I graduated with that degree in 1993, and that's what started my time in healthcare. I went back to East Carolina University some years later and obtained my Bachelor of Science degree in health service management. Decided at some point I wanted to be a registered nurse and graduated from Nash Community College with my associate degree in nursing in 2014. I finally graduated from Fayetteville State University in Fayetteville, North Carolina with my Master's in Business Administration. I'm a registered ultrasound technologist, a registered radiologic technologist, and a registered nurse. I bring an enormous amount of healthcare experience to this role as a CEO here at Haywood Regional Medical Center. And I think that's critical to this role. I've spent most of my time in Wilson, North Carolina, so I'm from the eastern part of the state. My mother moved us to Greenville, North Carolina in 1977, and that's where I remained until I married my high school sweetheart in 1993 and moved to Wilson, North Carolina. And I had stayed in Wilson until LifePoint moved me to Tennessee in 2019. So a long time there in that community, which reminds me so much of this community, just opposite ends of the state, for sure. I became an associate administrator in Wilson in 2016 and stayed there until 19. Went out to Athens in Etowah, Tennessee, right in between Chattanooga and Knoxville, where I spent the next three years as chief operating officer. Had the opportunity to come back to the state where my family is, where my children are, and took a position at Frye Regional Medical Center as the chief operating officer, and then spent some time there as the interim CEO prior to coming here in November. I found this to be an amazing and very welcoming community. It's a thrill and a joy to be here. We've got an amazing medical staff, an awesome group of employees, and a very supportive community of Haywood Regional Medical Center. I feel it each and every day, and that's critically important. I'm currently focused on stabilizing our staffing, developing our culture, and growing our services. I want to grow our brand here in Haywood County and the surrounding areas by developing or delivering high-quality, exceptional healthcare. That's my whole purpose for being here. I challenge my staff each and every day to make a difference in the lives of those people they come in contact with. I believe that's our purpose, our entire purpose. It's what God has called each and every one of us to do. And if we do that each and every day, everything else will be okay. I know that, for sure. That's what I ask my team to do. That concludes my introduction. I'll be glad to entertain any questions you might have. I would like to provide you with a card. It has my cell phone number on there. I would ask that you would use that. I would ask that you would share that. I'd love to hear great things that are happening at the hospital, and I'd love to hear about opportunities that are happening at the hospital. And you're welcome to share my contact information.
Just leave that with Amy when you, does anybody have any questions?
I appreciate your commitment to our community. It's important for our local hospital to be a good community partner, and I think you and I have spoken about that once before. Managed rental property and one of your, I have a staff member that is a tenant at one of our properties, and he said, I said, "So how is the hospital?" And he said, "One of the best I've ever worked at."
It's good to hear that.
Yeah, that's good. He's confident and enjoys being there, so.
That's our goal.
Yes.
For our patients, employees, and our physicians, for sure.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Excited to be part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to agenda, but I do not have anything. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, then our next order of business will be our consent agenda. Of the seven items on the consent agenda, does Commissioners have any questions about any of those seven items?
About one correction on the regular minutes, I spoke with Amy about it. I don't know if we need to do that now or vote on it next time. A correction on the regular minutes, I mentioned a Bible verse was, my Ammonetations 3:23. I think there's a typo there, so. That's actually the verse, "Great is thy faithfulness." The song was inspired by because that verse says that his mercies are new for us each and every day, and "great is thy faithfulness," so I wanted to get that in there. Also, I'll make a comment about one item on the consent agenda, Matty's Fund. It's $4,375 to fund efforts to return displaced animals to their homes. I guess animals get turned in, or they get picked up and, you know, they're looking to replace them or put them back, put them back to their home. And I did a little research on this Matty's Fund. Believe it or not, there was a guy that, back in the 90s, had a dog named Matty. And I know Howard's shaking his head back there, our Animal Services Director, thanks for being here. But they, him and his wife actually have donated $245 million across 50 states and individual counties to help with finding, getting these displaced animals back to their correct owner. I thought that was pretty amazing that somebody would donate 240-some million dollars for that effort. And I guess we're just one of over 3,000 counties in the whole nation that are recipients of some of these funds to get these animals back to their proper home. So just thought I'd mention that on the consent agenda, it's pretty interesting.
Anybody else got anything? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented with one correction on the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion at all? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. The first item is request approval of letter of support to North Carolina General Assembly and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for Hold Harmless Provision for Haywood County Schools. Is Trevor here this morning?
I don't see.
Okay.
I can, I can handle it.
You want to elaborate what that is? Okay.
We've talked a couple of times about the struggles the school systems have in keeping students. And there's actually a provision in the General Assembly that will allow a request for a hold harmless payment for actually three years. And I think because of declining students, COVID, the ransomware attack that the school system had, Tropical Storm Fred flooding a couple of their facilities, and now the mill closing, the schools have asked us to support a letter requesting that hold harmless payment for 36 months or three years so they can have a little more time and flexibility in how they manage not just their employees, but a declining student population.
Okay. Any questions about that? Any other? I entertain a motion, we approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Item number two is to request approval of the Third Amendment to the Sanitary Landfill Operation Agreement and approval for county manager to execute all related documentation. We have Republic Services General Manager Steve Slater. Steve, are you here? And Ms. Thomas had alluded to the recycling efforts, and that's pretty amazing that y'all can do that. You don't have to, I know it used to, y'all had to ship it to China, I think, or wherever, you know.
We're doing a lot more domestically now.
That's good.
As she stated, we are opening the first polymer center with plans for multiple. Sustainability is one of our core values as a company. We are working with Oshkosh currently and have two prototype EV trash trucks to be launched in 2024. I appreciate the Solid Waste Board working with us on this amendment and also for the Board of Commissioners to put it on the agenda. The Third Amendment, basically, it clarifies language in Section 10.3, Paragraph B. It brings the first paragraph in line with the second paragraph, establishing the rates at the landfill and setting the below-market rate for the county and the residents of Haywood, Haywood County. I just want to see if anybody had any questions regarding it.
I know Brandon and Tom are on that committee.
I know the in-county resident rate's substantially lower than surrounding counties.
Yes, sir.
Those numbers escape me, but they're substantially lower for our county residents. We've been able to do that through y'all's good management and.
Yes, and that, and the language in the amendment will not change what the county's paying or what individual residents are paying at the landfill.
This is only commercial.
Commercial, industrial only.
And I'll say too, I was out at the landfill, I know Commissioner Longman out as well, and you guys are doing a great job. I mean, it looks better than it ever has, you know.
I appreciate that.
Neat, cleaned up, and done a lot of great things out there. So I was just out there a couple of weeks ago and liked what I saw. So we appreciate you guys, you and John, and what you do out there at the landfill.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I think I've said this before, but when I first was elected as Commissioner back in early 2000s, I toured the landfill and it looked like a landfill and papers blowing around everywhere and bags and everything. So, but now, when you go to the landfill, it just looks like a little, little construction site, like they're building a house or something because everything's covered up and just wherever you're working is what you, is the only trash you see, so.
There's no reason a landfill can't look like a park.
That's true, that's true, yeah. So you're definitely, and you brought your expertise, and I'll just remind everybody, in 2011, when we did that with SANTAC, and now they, you know, it's Republic, we, at that time, we projected 1.9 million a year in savings by doing this agreement. And, and so that's 1.9 million dollars that taxpayers get to keep in their pocket every year. And it's probably more than that now because of inflation. So we appreciate your expertise, and it's good to have you folks on the job and making sure that, you know, we do it right. There's a lot of statutes that we have to follow.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody got anything else?
I appreciate John coming, too. I'm sure you want to make a speech, John, but Steve's carrying the mail for you.
He's the man who makes the magic, honey.
He's real talkative behind closed doors, but out publicly. I'm glad you pointed that out, Commissioner Anzler. You know, the savings that the taxpayers save each and every year, it is over $2 million now. So that's important. I meant to mention that as well, but forgot, but thank you for that.
I always like to point that out. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, we approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, item three of the regular agenda is to request approval to accept the quote from Lead Better's Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated in the amount of $21,054 for the replacement of the twin gas furnaces in the banquet hall. One gas furnace and five-ton air conditioning unit for kitchen area at the Mountain Area Resource Center. We have our Facilities Director, Tim Sisk, here this morning. Welcome, Tim. Good to see you today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, Howard, everybody today. This is pretty straightforward. The what's driving this request is a replacement of equipment that has the R22 refrigerant. When I first took over this role, I engaged our new HVC technician, Sean Waite, to go through and kind of produce a spreadsheet, if you will, and analysis of what we have in the county. And we have about 15 of these smaller units that are R22, have the R22 refrigerant. Now, there is a statement from the EPA that clearly says, because R22 refrigerant is being phased out, and this was in 2020, the Environmental Protection Agency encourages you to develop a plan to transition away from R22. There's two ways to do this. You can replace all the refrigerant in this equipment. I don't see a need for that at the age of this equipment. What I feel like is that we put a, kind of a three-to-five-year bracket of time and start plugging some of these things in and get them replaced. That's what's driving this whole thing. You saw in your package the state of this particular equipment that we're reaching for. Everything else that we've got on our slate is, you know, three and a half to five-ton in size, so smaller pieces. But that's what this request is, is the beginning of a replacement schedule for some of the smaller equipment over the next three to five years. Any questions?
So the R22, it's completely been phased out?
It's no longer being produced. The only way that we can get it is if we recover it and use it in our own equipment. Having said that, the chiller that was approved in November of last year is actually an R22 piece of equipment. So when that comes down, we can, we can recover some of that refrigerant for these repairs as we get through this. So I feel very comfortable in capturing some refrigerant and using it. But the R22 has a feature where it is the depleting of the ozone, that's why they phased it out. In 2020, they stopped production altogether. In 2020, they stopped production altogether, so, you know? And we don't have any R22 on hand and can't get it, so...
And if you do get it, you pay a lot because...
If you get it, it has been recovered from some other state or some other facility and been, you know, cleaned and remanufactured, if you will, refined and cleaned up. So it does come at a very costly...
I've got... I think I've got the last... One of my personal... I've had to replace several of those, but I've got one left. That's still on the R22, and that's what my HVAC technician suggested I just replace it, and it's about 18 years old, so I guess...
Yeah, 20 years at a residential level is a big number, so at a commercial use, you know, we're reducing those numbers. And every bit of this is within that window. Again, there's... Give me one second here. The Ag Building and the Mark Building seem to have the bulk of it. Ag Building has six systems between three and a half and five tons with a two-to-three-year expect... life expectancy, and the Mark Building has the other eight, and this is a part of that. And all of those are five-ton units, so...
Are you getting any feedback on the runability of the new refrigerant? I understand those systems have to run at a much higher pressure just by the characteristics of the gas, that there was some concern that maybe they wouldn't be as durable as R22 units.
I haven't... Tommy, the replacement refrigerant that they're talking about is something called MO99, and I don't know anything about... I don't know anything about it, unfortunately. We haven't had any issues outside of that. There's two other York units that have some equipment failure, but it's more of an electronic, you know, a board, defrost board or something. But again, this is... At the age of this equipment, I see no need in trying to replace the refrigerant, just put it into a schedule over the next, again, three to five years and maintain it during that time.
Tim, is that like... They're doing away with that like they did R12 in the cars and stuff and went to R134?
They've done away with it, yeah. 2020, they stopped producing. It's... Again, we can't get it. We cannot buy new R22 refrigerant right now. If we do get it, it's been recovered from some other... Now, if we can recover some R22 of our own, we can use it in our own systems. I fear that through contamination of the refrigerant. You know, are you putting bad refrigerant into an old system? So the best choice here is to start replacing it at this 17-to-18, 20-year-old bracket for this equipment. A lot of this stuff just hasn't been looked at in years.
There'll probably come a time where they'll completely say you can't use it no more, won't you, like they did R12 and stuff?
We're... Again, we're there now. You can't... We can't get it. If the equipment's in place, you can maintain it. You can replace it with this MO99, but as far as getting equipment with R22, it is no longer being produced and refrigerant to maintain it.
How old is this unit?
This unit is in that 17-to-18-year-old bracket.
Looks pretty tired.
Yeah. If you saw the pictures, it's in the bottom of the packet there. It's done.
Looks like it's time.
It's time, yeah.
What brand was it? I'm sorry.
York?
I think it was a York.
What brand are they putting in?
Carrier.
Carrier, okay.
Yeah, we had quotes on Carrier and York, and Carrier came in cheaper, and again, Carrier's...
I've got Carrier. I've got both of those actually.
It really is. It'll give us another 20 years.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Yeah, if we try to capture all this stuff at one time, and it's a pretty big ticket item, so I'd like to filter it in and get as much use, honestly, get as much use out of the old equipment as we can.
Do you plan to just let the other piece of equipment fail before you replace it? Is that your plan?
No, I don't... I won't want to, no. I'd like to, again, the next step would be to identify the next piece in line and try to get it... You know, when it starts showing us a lot of troubles, that's when we bring it up to the top of our replacement schedule. And I can certainly share the spreadsheet that Sean put together. It's very in-depth, very, very thick, and it tells a pretty good story about how much equipment is in the county, and a lot of it is in that same age bracket, a lot of it. So if we... If I'll wait for it to fail, then there's a good chance we got a lot of it failing at the same time. I'd really like to work on it a piecemeal and get these things improved as we can.
Know how many we have altogether?
In the county?
Yeah.
There's 350-plus pieces in Paragon Parkway. If I had to make an uneducated guess, I would say we're probably in the 650 to 700 pieces of air-moving or refrigerant piece of equipment. You know, for instance, if you take the Justice Center, there's fan coil boxes with, you know, a refrigerant coil, 25 pieces on each floor. Again, Paragon Parkway at 100,000 square feet, there's probably 350 pieces of equipment. The spreadsheet doesn't reflect all of the small fan coil boxes, but a lot of the... Anything that moves refrigerant, anything that pumps.
Definitely the approach you're taking is the way to go. I mean, replacing them a few at a time or one at a time.
I'm really trying to identify, you know, and I'm not only looking at heating and air conditioning. I know I've brought that to you probably more than anything else. Just this last year, we identified two generators. One, Chambers Mountain, Sheriff's Repeater would not pass a load bank, so we put it in a schedule, and again, it was less than what needed to come before y'all. And we had one on Crabtree Ball that was eat up with mice. My predecessor, Ed Payne, and I spent... We spent a couple of days trying to work through the wiring harness and the generator to get it to the point that we could replace it, and we were able to get both of those. So I'm looking at a kind of a broad stroke to look at all the equipment and see what needs to be replaced before it does fail, because we don't need a generator failing at the repeater, you know, for 911. That's a... To me, that's a piece of infrastructure. And, you know, as we talk about air conditioning, you know, maybe it's not considered critical infrastructure until you get into 911 data room. And over Christmas holiday, we were negative five degrees outside. I couldn't cool the data room because we were outside of our operating range of the air conditioning. So the data room got to 95 degrees, and Shannon Morgan got real itchy, you know? I couldn't cool the room. So two fans and an open door, I blew enough heat off of the racks to warm and keep comfortable the entire console room. And we, you know, we babysat that thing for three days during those cold temperatures. So air conditioning became a part of very critical infrastructure in that data room. And it's funny to say that an air conditioner will shut you down, but in that case, it would. So I'm trying to put eyes on all of it, guys, and keep our head above water.
Appreciate you being proactive, too.
Okay, trying to. Really trying to, Kevin.
And, you know, we did a lot of building, you know?
Yes, you did.
At that time, we had... Yeah, we had the Justice Center, we had Law Enforcement Center.
Yeah, about 15 years ago.
Yeah, Mountain Resource, they redid that.
And that's all coming due.
Yeah. Yeah, they did. So I appreciate you staying on top of it and just kind of, you know, kind of one at a time.
If I brought you guys everything at one time as it fails, and you'd look at me that I'm not doing my job, so I am trying to look at this thing in a proactive manner.
Tim, we got anything else?
Any other questions? Well, again, it's a broad effort, and everybody's working really hard for it, so...
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and the first item is to request approval of reappointment of Lyndon Smathers to a second three-year term to the Clyde Planning Board as an ETJ member. Brian, you want to handle all of these as I go through them?
Sure. Not a whole lot else to add with Mr. Smathers, except that the Claude Board of Aldermen recommend that he be reappointed in the role of regular ETJ member.
Oh, Mr. Smathers, personally, I know when I entered the workforce back in '86, he was a mentor. We made a lot of ball-canning jars, and he's a Army veteran. Appreciate Mr. Smathers stepping up and volunteering to make a positive difference in his community. So I wholeheartedly make a motion to seat Mr. Smathers on another term.
Okay, for a second?
Second, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, number two is to request approval of reappointment of James Pearson and Margaret Pearson to second three-year terms on the Nursing Home Advisory Board.
Correct. The only thing to add would be that the Southwestern Commission on Budsmann supports the reappointment and requests Commissioner approval.
Yeah, let me just say, I appreciate... These aren't... These are boards that are very important and probably not real exciting and probably look at information, so we appreciate their service on that. So I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of appointments.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay. Number three is to request approval of reappointment of Jean Dilly to a three-year term on the Haywood County Library Board of Trustees.
The Board of Trustees voted on their March 15, 2023 meeting to reappoint Ms. Dilly. They request that the Commissioners approve the appointment.
I serve on that board, and Jean is, as many of the... As all of the members are, very passionate about the library and what it provides to the community, so glad she's coming back.
Good, okay. You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we reappoint Jean Dilly to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Item number four is to request approval of reappointment of Kathy Advody and Melissa Tinsley to second three-year terms for the county at-large seats on the Greenway Advisory Council.
The only note would be that the Greenway Advisory Council recommends the reappointments of both Ms. Tinsley and Advody as they have served their terms, first terms in good standing.
Okay. Do you have... Brandon, you're on that board. Do you?
This is the Greenway Advisory.
Oh, that's right, you're on the...
I'm on the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I went to their meeting the other day, Kevin, and I think you're having a pretty hard time getting some of the at-large members. Amy, are there five of them? Is that... Am I correct on that?
I chatted with Amy this morning. I believe after... If these two get reappointed, there will be one position remaining, and I think it will be posted this week.
We run into that a lot. Sometimes we have problems with people volunteering, especially on these volunteer boards that require a lot of work. So I do appreciate our volunteers that do a good job. They don't get paid a penny for their work and their time, but they do on these boards, and I do appreciate people that do step up.
I appreciate that board, too, because, you know, we need recreation in the county when people visit here from... Or if they don't visit here, I know I've gone to other communities on vacation, and the Greenways systems are vast and well-used, and folks seem to really like them. So appreciate us having a council where we can make sure that we get good, safe Greenways. So I'll entertain a motion. We approve item four.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Okay, that concludes our agenda. We do not have a closed session. Does anyone have anything else to bring before the board?
Got a few closing comments, Mr. Chairman. I know when... Or Saturday, we had a tremendous wind event came through the county, and it knocked the power off and on just about county-wide at one time or another. And so I would like to say thank you to all our linemen, our power company workers. Came through here like a West Texas dust storm. I mean, it just destroys. I mean, you know, it'll destroy things, and just appreciate all our workers that risk their life and limb, and our volunteer fire departments that came out and helped clear trees out of roads. And I know there was a fatality over in Bunkin County there at the Biltmore State, so it was a very extreme event, and just want to thank all of our county staff and Sheriff's Department, fire departments, all our public servants. That's, I guess, the 911 operators kind of wore the phones out Saturday, but appreciate all the work.
Not only that, but we had a couple of fires in the county since our last meeting, and as you mentioned, we'd like to thank those folks and everyone that come in from surrounding counties to help put those fires out. So I think we contained them pretty well and no injuries.
And that rain was good because it doused all those flames. And then the wind came and dried everything out.
We were pretty lucky because a whole lot of trees in Haywood County fell. I'm talking about a whole lot of them, and the big sign right there where the new Dollar